I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everybody. We've got a full room. And next thing on the agenda is the approval of the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
One second.
It's been moved to second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Approval of the minutes.
Make a motion to approve the minutes. Second.
It's been moved to second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Approval of claims for payment.
Make a motion to approve the claims for payment.
One second.
It's been moved to second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next, we have Jody Stupp here on Crisis Intervention Services Domestic Violence Awareness Month Proclamation.
Thanks for letting us come to the meeting. I'm going to have my coworker Danielle actually read the proclamation for everyone to hear, and then we're going to ask that you guys sign it.
Whereas homes should be a place of warmth, unconditional love, tranquility, and security, and for most of us, home and family can indeed be accounted among our greatest blessings. Tragically for many community members, these blessings are tarnished by violence and fear. And whereas domestic violence is more than an occasional family dispute, it is a serious crime that affects groups, people of all races, ethnicities, ages, mental or physical abilities, socioeconomic status, religious backgrounds, and genders. And whereas the crime of domestic violence violates an individual's privacy, dignity, security, and humanity due to the systematic use of physical, emotional, sexual, psychological, and economic control or abuse. And whereas 241 adults and children have been killed in the state of Iowa as a result of domestic violence since 1995, and Hardin County annually averages an estimated 45 domestic violence arrests. And whereas children who grow up in violent homes are abused and neglected at a higher rate than the national average, and more than 4 million children in the United States are at risk for witnessing domestic violence each year. And whereas domestic violence costs the nation over $5 billion annually in medical expenses, law enforcement, and court costs, shelters and foster care, sick leave, absenteeism, and reduced worker productivity. And whereas only a coordinated community effort will bring an end to this epidemic of crime and violence, and we as a community must address the problem of domestic violence in our homes and neighborhoods every day of the year. And whereas a coalition of organizations has emerged to directly confront this crisis, law enforcement officials, victim service programs, healthcare providers, the faith community, and other concerned citizens are helping in the effort to end domestic violence. We must recognize the compassion and dedication of these volunteers and professionals of life, applaud their efforts, and increase public understanding of this important social problem. Now, we ask that the Hardin County Board of Supervisors do hereby proclaim the month of October 2014 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and urge all citizens of Hardin County to observe this month by becoming aware of the tragedy of domestic violence, supporting those who are working toward its end, and participating in community efforts.
Thank you. Do you may have any questions?
I would just say thank you for everything that you're doing. I think this is something that a lot of people, out of sight, out of mind. You know, if you don't know anybody that's been in this situation, you've just put it to the back of your mind. You don't think it even exists. You just live in your own little world, and it takes people like yourselves to keep this in front of people and say that, hey, this is going on. You're just not, you're fortunate enough not to have to see it or witness it. So I think it's great what you guys are doing, and thank you for coming here and getting this in the light of the public.
And thanks for your support, and the community support.
We just spent two hours talking about issues like this last night. And appreciate your work. Do we need a motion?
Yes.
Make a motion to proclaim the month of October Domestic Violence Awareness Month.
Second.
It's been moved to second. Is this a roll call? Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thanks, Jody.
Pass around purple ribbons, so that's one thing you guys can all do is wear your purple ribbon this month.
Nancy, you need a copy of this, right?
Do you have an extra? We can post it. We'll post one upstairs.
Thank you very much.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. Next, we have Dwayne Brewer regarding Maplehurst Drive and Thurston Lane.
We do have some maps.
This is the most current.
Okay.
That was last Thursday. It's in three lots, I've been told.
Maybe our engineer. Darryl, do you have the most current?
Uh, nope.
Okay.
I want to give one to the county engineer here.
His map's way better than what Nancy gave us.
There we go.
I guess the question is, what are we proposing here?
Pardon?
What are we proposing? Can you explain to me which one?
Today, I want to thank you for allowing me to be on your agenda, and I'd like to explain to you the Maplehurst subdivision, that you have a map in front of you, and this is up to date now, as of last Thursday. The one you have is, that you got, is already old-fashioned, and it changes, it's changing very rapidly. So, so you have the map in front of you, and we want to explain a little bit about these people that's living out here, have built homes, and they're very nice homes, very nice homes. I, of course, am Dwayne Brewer, and this is my wife Dorothy. She's my business manager. And I would like to explain a little bit about the map before we get into the details. It won't take too long. If we want to start out, you see the Brewer number four at the bottom of the map, and that road in front of it is S-33 blacktop coming out of Iowa Falls. Now, you come out of Iowa Falls on Silom Road, and you go across that little bridge, and from that little bridge on west is the country. That's where this map is located from, and the city limits is at that little bridge. So I wanted to bring that up to you. We kind of started this development. This farm was purchased back in '67, and we'd like to talk to you a little bit about Maplehurst Drive. The county at the present time is maintaining that road, and the buses can go up Maplehurst Drive to the cul-de-sac. There they have to turn around. They will not go on a road that is not maintained by the county. And so that's one of the reasons that we are here today. That road is already built, and I built the Maplehurst Drive and the Thurston Lane, which starts at the cul-de-sac, it goes west, and then back north. And you can see the people that live out here, and these are all current as of now, as of yesterday. The number nine at the bottom was sold, and they moved in. So, and number 17, as we are speaking, he's digging the basement for that house there. And on number 20 is sold, and they want to build their, lay it in yet this fall. But fall is moving in on us pretty fast, probably, I don't know if it's going to get done or not. But 17 and 20 is going to have names connected to them. 18 and 19 was sold last week, so that's why the map that you had is a little bit old-fashioned. The rest of the map is pretty much up to date. On the east side of Maplehurst Drive, there's 12 homes, and they're very, very nice homes. And we'll be talking about Thurston Lane. It starts up there at Maplehurst Drive and goes back to, goes around the corner there to Reno Edition. And he's got a road up to his place. That's a house at the end of that road, and that's where Reno lives. Okay, in those 12 homes there, now we'll go what I call west of Maplehurst, and everything there is pretty much up to date, as I told you, as of today, they're digging the basement on 17 and the rest of it. Now, the comments that we have is that we need a road, Maplehurst and Thurston Lane is all built, but we need a road from Jay Avenue, which is on the west, down to Maplehurst Drive. And that's about a third of a mile, quarter to a third of a mile. And we need a road there because some of these people that's going to be buying 17, particularly, and maybe 20, are going to have children. The bus will not go down a road that is not maintained by the county. And John Robbins, who's the superintendent at Iowa Falls, told me that we have to pick up the kids. So if lot number 20 is sold to a family that has two or three children, they've got to walk up to the west or to Maplehurst Drive. And I know, there's a lot of you, some of you in here, I know I've walked to school three-quarters of a mile in a country school. They don't do that anymore. And they, all the people out in the country ride buses. And that's fine. I'm happy for them, because I remember I carried a dinner pail, my books, my sister's books, and we had to walk three-quarters of a mile to a country school. And, but they won't do that. And that also has a problem with people buying lots if the bus doesn't come by and pick up their children. That is a concern. Now, the only one, Stockdale up there, who's an attorney in Iowa Falls, he said, "My kids can walk up to cul-de-sac, and it's not going to hurt them." And he said, "I want them to walk up there and know what some of you older people had to go through." Okay, now, Jay Avenue is clear to thee, and of course, that's a county road. And the front road is S-33. Those are the roads that are concerned for us is Thurston Lane. That's already built. I've done that several years ago, but it is not maintained. And the people that border Thurston Lane are responsible for the snow and laying, if it needs a load of gravel or whatever. And so they are doing that at the present time, the people that border Thurston Lane. Now, same way with Pheasant Run. Let's drop down to the bottom part of the map, and you'll see Pheasant Run Drive. That's a bean field as of yesterday. It's now empty. And the bulldozers moved in on lot 17 yesterday, but that road has not had any other than, right where Redman lives, we did make a little road so that they can get in and out of their houses down to, you can see where it's, we made a little road of 180 and about 132 feet. So it's got to start. But we need something from that point to Maplehurst Drive. Now, what I'm asking, I guess, of the county Board of Supervisors is that they assume the responsibility of getting that road built, and also maintaining Thurston Lane, removal of snow, and if it needs any gravel or on the top, put that in. Now, everybody out here would like to have a blacktop road, but I don't know, we would sure appreciate if a blacktop road could be. And I know that you people have to worry about finances. Well, I'd like to tell you that what I want to do, most of these lots are just over an acre that you see. And the reason they are, because they put in geothermal, geotextile. In fact, on Maplehurst Drive, when I built it, I built way over the county specs. I put a geotextile mat down from the beginning on S-33 back to the cul-de-sac. And that's a mat that you enroll, and then we put in seven-inch rock, and then on top of that, we built the road. But that is a nice road. And so, anyway, where we're at now is that I'd like to talk to you about changing that one acre that I'm paying approximately $25 an acre taxes, and I'd like to expand that to about $4,600 an acre that you people would receive. Now, I know that when taxes are paid, you don't get them all, you don't get all of them here in this office, I don't think, do you? For the roadwork?
No.
I don't know what percent of the taxes.
It's $3.00375 dollars per $1,000 taxable valuation. So whatever the value of that is, divided by 1,000 times $3 is what goes to secondary roads.
Okay, thank you. Most of those homes out there, our taxes are $4,400 on our house there. About half of these houses are better than ours, so they're paying more taxes. And the other half, I think, are a little, I'm guessing, they're a little, I didn't talk to everybody. I talked to a few people out here on the taxation, and that's what they're paying, and that's what we're paying. But my land tax, and we're farming the center part that you see, it's nothing in there yet, that's about $25, $22, $25 an acre. And so all of these that are being sold next year, and they're already gone, they will not be into crop anymore, and that's about $25 an acre. And if they build a normal home, and we have covenants that they have to follow. And some people think they're quite strict, but I want to interview the family that's going to build the home. I want to tell them that they're, and I taught agriculture for 20, for actually, 24 years at the college, and 16 years in Alden. Brian was one of my students, and so he's pretty well acquainted around where we are talking about. And anyway, what I would like to ask the group is that we would certainly welcome any type of assistance on Pheasant Run, and then maintaining up to Reno Drive, snow and gravel, and mainly for the bus tour, for the buses that come through. Now, you may not agree that you say, "Well, these kids can walk." Well, I agree with you. They can walk a mile or a mile and a quarter to school, but I don't know very many students that do. Maybe in town here, they have to walk. I don't know. But I think it's good for a student to get out in the cold weather and carry his dinner bucket. Well, they don't do that anymore either. But anyway, we would like to work with you on that. And what I'm paying is, as I said earlier, $25 an acre on the ground that is not developed, and those that are sold are paying $25. But if they build a normal house, you're going to get $4,400 per year from that one acre. So that's a pretty good investment. I think when I was in economics in college, if you can make $25 and you get $4,400 the next year, you should do it. You should invest. Okay? Any questions up to this point?
Yes, you said Reno. Is Thurston just the north-south, or is that all the way?
Okay, excuse me. Thurston Lane starts at the cul-de-sac at the end of Maplehurst Drive.
Okay.
Goes west.
Okay.
And then there's no houses. Reno bought four lots because he bought first lot seven and lot six, and he says, "I just do not have any close neighbors." And they are a little, and Reno's, where his house is there, is a little bit larger than an acre. However, that's in a floodplain, and he can only build his house up on top, which he did. And, but his house is much more expensive. It's in the million-dollar class. And so he's paying a lot more. And he would like to see, of course, the blacktop. He maintained, he's got a blacktop from where it says on lot seven through lot six of that lane right there. That's all blacktop. And he did that.
So is Thurston Lane then turn and go north?
Yes, Thurston Lane.
Okay.
And then you go west, and then you go north.
Okay, so we went west, then we're north. Now it come up, does it go west again?
I'm not building anything up there as of yet. I'm going, there's a cul-de-sac at the end of Thurston Lane.
Okay, so that's the end really of the road?
Yeah, that's the end of the road.
Okay.
But the plan is going to show that part of Thurston Lane that goes out to Jay Avenue, but that is not being considered because Kruko says, and he's a businessman in Iowa Falls, he says, "I will never sell that land, because I don't want any," his house is just right across from lot 11 and lot 12, and he's got a blacktop going out to Jay Avenue. That is not in the subdivision. I sold that lot several years ago to a guy named Skinner, who was a car dealer in Iowa Falls, and he built the house. Since then, there's been a couple other people. A person by the name of Wilbon, who had some dogs, and he had them on the other side, because you can't have any pets for sale, you might say. You can have a couple dogs or a cat or something, but you can't have any other livestock. And I've had to turn down several, well, I think, potential buyers, but they said, "Now, my son is in FFA, and I have, and I taught boag in Alden for 16 years, and then I taught egg science in the college for 24, and I'm in agriculture." But this, two of these people said, "My children, FFA, I'm going to have two sow's in the back of my lot. That is not going to be done." So I did not sell them the lots. And I'm not against livestock. In fact, I'm for agriculture in every way. But, and I think that one person that he, that I was really debating him, I think that he would take care of his animals. But if that animal broke through that fence, if that was a gilt or steer broke through that fence, he's going to be in another person's garden or in the, around his house.
Dwayne, I'm going to back you up a little bit. Let's get back to the road.
Okay.
Not the real estate side of it.
I guess, real quick, maybe Randy, you can help me, but in the past, the way that I understood it, if you sold a piece of property to somebody, you can't really landlock them. Is that?
No.
They're going to have to have easement to get out, so you're going to have to put this road in no matter what. And standard procedure, really, everywhere else I've seen, when you do a development, the developer builds the road, brings it up to standard, and then passes it on to the entity, and then responsibility comes then on.
Well, the first two years, I took an inch tractor and a loader, because the county wouldn't. Fred Fuller and Carl Leto, I believe was on the board, was a supervisor. And they came out and they said, "Boy, we want to work with you. We need lots." And there's no lots in Iowa Falls to be had. I asked two real attorneys, and they said, "We don't have a single lot." And so that's, and they said, "We'll work with you. You just, you get your survey done, and we'll build the road." Well, the survey got done, and they said, "Well, we don't have any money." So I built the road, and I built it way beyond county specs on Maplehurst Drive. And then they came out and they said, "Well, you don't have enough. You're supposed to have four foot on each side of the 22 feet of shoulder." And he said, "You need more." So I got Laurel Thomas out there again, and we put six feet on each side. And so the road is wider than really, you can go down that road and turn around and come back about any place.
Well, we will have standards that, you know, if you want the county to take it over, then you need to build it to those standards, and everything is up, and then it's up to the board if you want to take that or not, you know?
What are the standards on the road?
Well, we have to look at, are we going to consider this urban, rural? So I don't want to tell you wrong right now. We can go back and discuss more.
It is, it'll be a rural road.
And I think the other thing, too, is the plans change, but I mean, is this it? Are you going to have a road that you add in the middle anymore? What are the intentions for the whole?
There's a good possibility that some of the center is going to be developed, yes.
Okay, so will it be developed where you need another road, or?
Well, it will be cul-de-sacs.
Okay.
Coming in off of lot four, it'll be a cul-de-sac, and six houses around it, and then it'll be another cul-de-sac up here, and then houses around it.
Okay, okay. Just to know what the plan is, so we can see how it is, and I guess I'm not familiar.
I don't know.
Are you thinking annexation anytime in the future?
Well, I know we're currently doing a housing study for Iowa Falls.
Okay.
And Maplehurst is one of two, apparently, areas where there is lots available, but the preliminary report came back, said there is a need for additional housing in certain areas. So I could see that you selling additional lots could be a very good possibility.
Yes, I think there is. In fact, I'll probably have lots, what I call north of Pheasant Run Drive.
Okay. Back to your question, I don't think there's been any discussion at this point about annexation, so.
So you have septic systems, rural water wells?
Okay, they're under the septic system. Every home has their own septic system. A lot of them are geothermal. Over half of them are geothermal. And so that's the way they're building right now out there.
Where do they, do you have well water or rural water, or does the city run water out to you?
Oh, no. City doesn't do anything. I've been to their meeting three times. And they said, "There isn't any way in our history, we've got to go from our water plant north a mile, then we come across, and then we hit a crick up here, we go across that, and then we're down to you, and that's our best way to go." And they said, they've asked us to come in to the city of Iowa Falls, however, they says, "We cannot give you any water, sewer, or power, or gas." He says, "All we want is your money, but we don't want you."
Well, Dwayne, I'm going to take this proposal. We'll talk about it with the engineer, and I know we have work session. We got one today as well.
Yep.
And we can bring this up there.
Okay.
What your request is that, right now, we do Maple Lane, and you would like that to continue through Section 9 or up to that cul-de-sac up there by Reno's.
Yeah, we'd like to maintain that road.
And Pheasant Run.
To pick up those children, right. And then these lots that says sold, I'm just sure there's going to be some families buying. There's quite a few young people out there, and they all have children. And so that's why I'm asking you for your assistance on building that lane, to give us lots so people can build, and the kids can get to school.
Well, why don't we take this in consideration, talk about it, and see what needs to be done, and get the information to you on what standards and recommendations need to be done.
Okay. Well, yeah, I'll build according to your standards. I want you to build according to your standards, oh, too. I don't want to have to be told you've got to have a certain amount of an 18-inch tile or a 18-inch culvert, when Franken County can use plastic. And you guys have to have metal. Metal deteriorates in soil. Plastic doesn't. I don't understand that reasoning. And we've got, there'll be a driveway in each one of those homes. And that's one of the things that's in the covenants, that they have to put in their own driveway where they want it. So, but I don't know why you people, why we have a rule like that, that they have, a lot of them want to put in plastic, because it's going to stay there. That's just like, I remember having an adult school, and we talked about play tile and plastic tile. And there were several farmers in that meeting that says, "Brewer, there will never be plastic tile on my farm." Guess what it is now? Almost 100% plastic tile. So, and I think that you people will eventually go to plastic culverts, too.
Yeah, we don't disallow them.
Oh, you don't?
Mm-mm.
Oh, they can have them?
Well, in the past, and some of the reasoning is when people burn ditches. Well, in before the past, and some of the reasoning is when people burn ditches, the plastic will burn and et cetera, and it's difficult to attach on if the county's expected to ta, attach on, because we carry metal and then, you know, but I don't have an issue with using plastic.
Okay, that's, that's one of the things.
As long as it's the right grade and stuff, you know, just because of plastic doesn't mean it's gonna work, you have to have the right grade and et cetera.
Well, that concludes my presentation, and we appreciate the, my time with you, and I, I thank you for it. Uh, I'm inviting all of you out to our place, cup of coffee and cookies.
Oh, you bet.
And we'll show you the development and explain anything in detail that you might want to know before you make an investment. And, uh, when you look at what you're investing and what you're returning, I think that it has to be a positive answer. There's more money created here than any street you have here in town on the same distance. And so when you are looking at your cost, if that's a factor, I think that that's something you have to consider. I'm gonna change paying $25 an acre to 440.
Oh, we'll take, we'll take a look at it and see where we come from there.
Okay, we, we appreciate the coming out, and thank you very much, and.
Thank you for your time.
You bet, thank you.
Looking forward to doing business with you.
You guys, you guys have any more questions, or?
How come you don't have a sign in my yard, Brian?
I get that from a lot of people, Dwayne. I keep running out of signs, so we keep ordering more.
All right.
Thanks, Dwayne.
Next, next on the agenda is the change of status in the Recorder's Office.
He was one of my funnest teachers, I would say that, he's a really nice guy. All right, where are we at?
Change of status Recorder's Office, Rolene Bergman resignation.
I will make a motion to accept the resignation.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Much carries. Next on the agenda is change of status, GIS Department.
Megan has sent in her resignation, looks like she has a really good opportunity in front of her, and so she's been a valued employee of this county and has done an awful lot for this county. So, accepting a resignation sometimes is hard, but I'm happy for her, so I will make a motion to accept that resignation.
I will second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? I highlighted some of her comments, she regrets leaving, however, I feel the change will be beneficial to my professional goals. I've really enjoyed working for the counties for the past eight years, so it was not a decision that was easy to make. I cannot thank you enough for all the opportunities and experiences you have provided me during my time here. As I move on to this new adventure in my life, I wish you all the very best. I wish her the best as well.
Well, miss Megan, and, uh, wish her luck in her future.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Much carries. Next is Sheriff's Quarterly Report. Dave, you got any comments?
No, sir.
I can motion to accept this Sheriff's Quarterly Report, ending 9/30/2014.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Much carries. Next is Accept Initial Bargaining Proposal, Sheriff's Union.
Thank you, sir.
We need a motion to accept, correct?
That's all we have to do, thank you.
I'll make a motion to accept the initial bargaining proposal for the Sheriff's Union.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Much carries. Thank you. Discussion action on time and date to receive bids on county farm lease with possible addition of conservation ground.
Yeah, we'd like to, uh, we got 45 plus acres over on the Ruby property on the highway just west of Steeble Rock, we'd like to, to let in your advertisement if we could.
We want to bid these two properties separate together?
Either or, however you guys want to do it.
We can let it at the same time. Okay, it's 58 acres, correct?
Uh, 45 plus.
Forty-five, okay. Let, let the two together, um, they'd be under the same stipulations as the county home ground, yours, how the tillage practices, everything will be the same?
Yeah, Randy did a pretty good job drafting that the first time, do it the same way.
As far as any drafting, again, Randy, is there a problem drafting up a new one at any specific time?
Um, no, no, basically, we would still, I would keep the legal descriptions the same. It could be decided, I think the proposal here is basically to let it and bid it, um, how, how close in proximity are these persons?
Pretty close.
Three miles is a crow fly.
Three miles of each other.
And I think that was what the benefit would be, is that perhaps, um, the same person may want to farm the same ground, but I could see, um, even the possibility of doing two separate leases, I mean, since there would be two different lessors, I'm assuming the rent would be going to two separate entities, on one hand, be in the county, on the other, uh, the conservation, pardon county conservation, but, uh, to just kind of have the economy of letting the same time, bidding the same time, especially since they're so close together. Time-wise, and again, um, at this phase, I don't see any problem. Uh, I'll just let the board know, I am going to be gone next week, okay, which would be, oh, let's see, 11, 13th, I will actually be around on the 13th, but the rest of that week I'll be gone. But I think probably at this point in time, we're just looking at a date for bidding, and then a notice of bidding would need to go out.
Um, we're looking at two-year contract? And then. And what we did before is we let, we did sealed bids, and then we opened it up and auctioned it off to the, the people that.
Put a bid in.
Put a bid in. Is that, you want to do the same?
I guess we didn't talk about that too much in depth.
I think if we got to put them together, I just think it attracts maybe some people from farther away, because in the farming world, you don't want to drive 20 miles for 40 acres, but you might drive 20 miles for, you know, 100 acres, so I think it broadens our circle of people, and I think in that sense, we may get the rent up for both of the properties. So I think it'd be a good idea to follow the same.
Are you saying, um, we could still have two separate leases, two different entities?
Right.
But bidding at the same time?
Right, bid them at the same time.
Exactly.
You'd have to write two different checks.
Yeah, what I'm picking up here is also bidding them as a unit, so that the successful bidder would be, uh, farming both the county and the conservation board, ours.
Yes.
Is that what you want to as well, Wes, or did you want to be able to separate them off if we had to?
No, if they wanted to farm both of them, that's fine with us.
The two pieces of land are pretty comparable, it's not, we don't have one that's really good and one that's really bad, I mean, they're, but what I've looked at, they're both, I think, in farming world, pretty comparable pieces.
Can you guys make sure and send me those notices when you're ready to send them to the paper, publish them?
Well, I guess what I'm looking for is how we, how we plan to do it as a bid, and as far as, uh, setting a date and time to receive bids, we would have to get together, we already have the legal description on everything, that shouldn't be too problem for people if they call in request what they're bidding on. And then, uh.
Do you need a map?
Do I at this time?
Do you need a map to go along with the legal descriptions and the location?
It wouldn't, it wouldn't hurt for people acquiring.
We can include that with the notice, yeah. Is that the property map? We can update it if you want to say anything special on it.
And then we'd also, people might want to check on CSR points unless you have that, see what they're actually looking at. I don't know if we can release that at the, uh, ASCS office so people can inquire.
We can get an average CSR for the property from the assessor's office, you can put that on there.
Okay.
Yeah, they would have it.
I guess if they wanted more information, they can always contact us.
Yeah, I was thinking, for some reason, I was thinking we might have had that in past years.
You can do a CSR report, break it down, the number of acres in each type of soil and, and average CSR.
Yep.
They can do that up at the assessor's, we can include that too.
Okay.
I was happy with how we handled it last time with the, the process that we went through. And so we have our legal description, I believe they have their legal description, so at the time, the person would just sign both, I think, and keep them separate, and so when they pay, they would pay two separate checks, but we're just gonna bid them together as one unit. That way, makes everything stay the same and flow easy for everyone. So I'm okay with that, we just need a.
Timeline.
Timeline, yeah, um, that works with Randy and Nancy and all of us.
November? Not the fifth.
How about the fourth?
Oh, I love.
He's getting passed away, he's like.
How about the 12th?
Well, if you get too late, and if they have an opportunity to get back on the property and do some fall tillage too, it's an option, it's 12th maybe?
Yeah, 29th is gonna be too soon, so 12th would be earliest, I would think, don't you?
Does that fit within timelines?
Yeah, it's a 4-20 notice, it's, and then we have just one request to send a notice to so far, so.
Okay. Randy?
Yeah.
Okay. So it's looking like, uh, to do sealed bids on, to be received by November 12th, and then after opening of bids, the bidders have the option to bid up. Auction, auction it off from that point, correct? Is that what we're talking?
Last time you said the three, the top three bidders were allowed to raise their bids in an auction setting.
We did the top three?
Top three, last time is what you said.
You only can set the time any day, because we're seeing.
10:02 fine. Time in here before 10?
You can set that too if you want.
I'll make a motion that we go ahead and put these two grounds together and bid them together, we're keeping everything else separate. Uh, to have our bids received November 12th by 9:30, bids must be into the auditor's office, to be opened at 10, at our 10, regular 10 o'clock meeting that day, with the top three bids being able to bid, raise their bid at that time at a regular meeting. Anything else you want in that motion, does that cover it?
I think that covered it.
That should cover it.
And I'll stop.
I'll start, and I'll second it.
Been moving seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Much carries. Utility permits.
Should have a utility permit there.
Make a motion to approve permit 10-07-14.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Much carries. Discussion action on date for public hearing on lease purchase agreement for John Deere 772G motor grader.
Can we back up just a second to secondary roads? I was under the impression we were supposed to get our union contract for negotiations, was that wrong, and that it was supposed to have been the sheriff instead last week?
I was under the impression last week it was supposed to be yours.
That's the impression I was under, and then.
I, because I don't, I don't know what's going on.
Then I heard that he went to the wrong county last week.
Yeah.
And so then I expected him here today, and I.
Because you tabled it last week.
Yeah, and I, I have not heard anything from them, no one's contacted me individually.
Since he couldn't find us.
Land's you in.
Haven't heard of that, outside of what emails we've gotten from Paul.
Yeah. We're ready, Paul's ready, but we haven't heard anything from the other side.
Okay, okay, I.
Yeah, good question.
Anything else on secondary roads?
No, that, that's.
That was it?
I was hoping, maybe I was missing something, then.
Now, now we move to discussion action on date for public hearing on lease purchase agreement for John Deere 772G motor grader, and this is one that we talked about last week, that you showed us a little bit of information on, um, is there any other discussion you'd like to throw out there?
It's, it's just a Band-Aid right now, is what it is, is because of the tier four technology, instead of being committed long-term, this is a short-term commitment, it is a really low rate, I mean, 21,000 a year is pretty inexpensive with the cost of rentals, machines, especially loading the snow equipment and everything, and then we may purchase it or we have the option not to, so. I guess it's up to you guys what you'd like to do.
Is there a timeline on this one, we gotta make a decision?
I don't know that.
I don't know if you'd like.
I don't know that we're pressed for time.
Okay. No, it is low cost. It doesn't fit in with the programs or anything else, we are down quite a few machines. Is it some, I know we have a work session later today, is it something that we want to talk about a little more?
Set the public hearing and then, you know, get it set, and then if somehow there's something else you want to do, or you don't have to approve it. But at least get the ball rolling, I guess.
I'm fine.
No, I'm looking at the calendar behind you.
What's a good date, earliest date we can go?
Um, I'd need to work with Daryl on a legal, it could probably run the 21st and 22nd, you could do it by the end of the month if you want, or you could push it into November.
You're not making the decision?
November?
You wanna?
Yeah, we gotta be careful.
Wait, so I can get the legal and then set the date, or do you want to set a date now and but push it out far enough where I can get that to Nancy here?
How soon, if it goes ahead, how long does it take to get the grader up and running?
Yeah, well.
Will we have it by winter?
Yeah, they always make nice promises, but.
Okay.
I mean, winter could be here next week, you never know.
Don't say that.
Well, I guess.
How about the snow attachments that go along with that, it's like, of course, that's gonna take longer also, right?
Yep.
Still look at the 12th again, we can do two things that day? November 12th? Can you give you time to get the legal and?
Sure.
And Nancy says that's wonderful.
I'll take that.
That's the same date as the bids, so we'll maneuver around that, so, want to do them right in row? All right, I'll make, uh, the motion, set the date for public hearing on lease purchase agreement for the John Deere, uh, motor grader for November 12th. Want to go just back to back, 10:02 fine? No?
Probably a little bit later, because if we do.
Okay.
It'll take a while.
10, 10:10, at least 10:15.
All right, 10:10.
Second.
Been moving seconded, any discussion?
I think, I guess from my end of it, we, we have to keep moving forward with this. You know, when I came at the office and you went and looked at our road grader fleet, there just wasn't a commitment there from the pass board to keep this fleet up to speed. And I, I think they really dropped the ball there and kind of painted us in a corner here a little bit because now we have these tier four machines that we're not trusting at the moment. And so, I think Daryl's come to us with a, a short-term plan that gets us around the tier fours. And I think also in this, you see a competition between Cat and John Deere that they're, we're starting to get some really good prices because we are working with both of them. So, I think it's good we stay working with both of them and keeps the competition in the, in the bids. So, um, I think this is a, a really good investment for the county company coming this winter, if we can get it this winter.
Even if we don't.
I'm fine with the short term, but we still, I guess, as soon as possible. And I know this tier three, tier four issue is, it is an issue. We still have to start looking at our long-term plan.
Nice thing about all three machines though, if they're all working out, they can stay after the lease is up. That's the nice thing, or they can go. And I think that's, that's the nice, what we're setting up, us up for is, uh, we have options.
Right. If we don't like it or if it's not doing what we think it needs to do.
Right.
You know, because we are testing it, a smaller machine with the cat, you know? So, where, where can we go and still fit, meet our needs?
I appreciate being able to look at multiple types of motor graders, uh, rather than a certain type and having, looking at the service issues with each. So, I guess we can compare.
I think we're going to have to keep pushing forward. Uh, it's obvious you have a pretty depleting fleet, especially with the repairs that we've had in the last eighteen months. And we need to keep pushing forward. From the time we've gotten here till today, this is the third machine that we've, we'll be looking at bringing in. And we need to continue looking at this to get us back into speed, otherwise the, the machines are failing that are on the road and we can't have that. We don't have the luxury of waiting to get them fixed. We need, we need the, for the public reasons, we need to have these machines up and rolling. So, I think that, I think it's a great program. I think John Deere actually came out with a very favorable offer for us. And we can see how this machine actually works. And I thank them for that too. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Much carries. Other business. Randy?
This is more along the lines of for your information. Usually in the past, uh, when a city files a petition, uh, dealing with abandoned property and they seek obtain, to obtain the title to that property, the county is named if they hold the tax sale certificate with respect to the property. And under that statute, um, the city can take title and basically wipe out any of the past taxes. That's really the only statute of legal action where that is allowed, is when the city comes in on an abandoned property. In the past, uh, after discussion with the board, at least initially, when that statute was passed, we did not, uh, contest those unless there was something, uh, special about the circumstances. Uh, we would not contest, we would not appear, we just let them proceed to judgment where the city would obtain the property. There's been a little wrinkle in one in Radcliffe, Iowa. It would be the Brody property. And really the only wrinkle to it is that the city's attorney did not initially name the county as a respondent defendant in this case. Uh, the case was filed, they, excuse me, they just did not name the county as a holder of that tax certificate. I've been contacted by that attorney and asked whether I would sign off basically as accepting service and whether we're consent to, uh, the entrance of a judgment. That's the wrinkle. Normally in the past on these cases, we've allowed it to happen, but this attorney has asked whether I would actually, um, sign a consent to a judgment being entered in favor of the city of Radcliffe. Now, there aren't any circumstances there that I'm aware of that would make this any different, uh, from the majority of the other cases with abandoned property. I just didn't want, uh, something flowing through the legal system where the board would see county attorney signing off to a consent of judgment where normally I would not, okay, with respect to that. It's just kind of a little bit because the city attorney forgot to add us in, in the first place. I don't believe there's any situation where the county is going to be able to claim or recoup that tax money. I don't believe that could occur. The city attorney could go back in and to a certain extent kind of restart these proceedings and end up at the same place with a judgment. So, really what this consent is doing is, um, making it easier on him so he does not have to go back and redo the legal proceedings. It's my opinion it should be done, um, unless I hear, I mean, anything out of the board here in the near future, I will just go ahead and sign that document and, um, that is what would happen.
Any opinions?
He's on the right track. I'm glad you made us aware of it.
I'm fine. Any other business? Hearing none, I'll ask for adjournment.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We're adjourned.